Mr. President.
Mr. Berkeley.
Here.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Your highness, would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual will with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have a public hearing. It's a proposed amendment for the zoning ordinance to designate personal services as a permitted use in West Venetia, West Venetia Road Mixed Use Corridor Zoning District.
So, the Venetia Group LLC are the owners and developers of the Venetia Postal Plaza, and they're requesting that the township consider a zoning ordinance change. The amendment requested is a change to the West Venetia Mixed Use Corridor Zoning District. That zoning district encompasses all the properties on the south side of Venetia Road from Bebaut Road West to the Nottingham Peters Township border. The change that is being proposed is to, a change to the list of permitted uses, and what is being shown on the screen is the change that's being proposed. With this change, what would be allowed that is not currently allowed are personal services? And that means uses such as barber shops and beauty shops, dry cleaners, shoe repair, self-service laundries and dry cleaning, rental supplies and travel agencies. It's our belief, and it's the belief of the Peters Township Planning Commission, that this, these uses are consistent with what the intent of the zoning district was. And at their March 11th, 2021 meeting, the planning commission recommended that council adopt a change to the zoning ordinance to permit personal services as a use within the zoning district. So if anybody has any questions?
Any questions in the council?
I do have a few questions. Maybe Nesterzov could help answer. I do promote the idea and appreciate the idea of businesses coming into that area. I think it's going to be a good thing for that part of the community. When we talk about personal services, can you clarify, does that involve things like a coffee shop or anything where food's involved?
Personal services do not, but we have specific other categories that would accommodate those uses.
Okay.
There is unlimited restaurant uses are allowed in this district, as is currently written.
Okay, so they-
No, I don't think a coffee shop, though.
Okay. Is there a reason, was there a reason we didn't expand this in the beginning when we were looking at that whole Venetia corridor? I don't remember there being one, but-
No specific reason comes to mind. I don't know why we did not allow personal services in this district when we adopted the new revisions in 2017. We were dealing with a lot of different new zoning districts and what uses were allowed in those districts.
Right.
I think it was just sort of an oversight to not let personal services be in this district.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for explaining.
Do you want to recollect some more, because that, when we did that back-
I can't tell who's speaking, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Let me start hearing.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My recollection is, back in that timeframe, like, there wasn't a building like the post office now. I mean, there wasn't really anything there that-
Sure.
-that would trigger any inquiries to, like, maybe we should do that, but, you know, now there seems to be an interest. And I can tell you that I ran into somebody, and I can't remember his name, but he lives down in that area, and he brought this up to me, and he thought it was a very good idea.
Right, I've got good feedback from the people who watch.
So-
Thank you very much.
Other questions for council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Would professional offices fit into this category?
None. None. Not this personal services category, but there is a office, professional office category, and those are permitted uses in this corridor as the ordinance is written today. They could put professional office-
In this building?
It could be used for professional office, under the current zone.
Okay, and for some reason you singled out no pet groomers or something of that nature.
Does the definition of personal services includes that specific language? So no pet services are allowed as a personal service?
And I guess as a personal service, I would expect that then to also include massage powers. Which would not-
Could be, yes, could be a personal service.
And I wouldn't be in favor of any more of those, but-
Other comments? Comments from the audience? Mr. Books?
Ron Books, 855 Bebaut Road. If I'm right, a few years ago, that area was under consideration as an industrial development zone. We were looking to put some manufacturers or other industries into that particular area. Has that now gone away?
I don't believe this particular area, that was the case.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Zo. What, what, I mean, I don't want them all, but what uses are permitted there now? Obviously, office-
Professional office, medical office, limited type of restaurant use is allowed there.
So do you mean not eat-in?
You could eat-in, there are some limited restaurant uses allowed in that zone.
Because that creates parking issues, eat-in restaurants.
It does. I don't have the ordinance in front of me. There's a limited number of uses that are allowed in that zoning district. It's a mix of, there's some wholesale landscaping that is permitted use in that district, there's office warehouses that are permitted use in that district. It's not, you know, like a general commercial where there are some limitations. There's no retail in this district.
I mean, I thought we should know that, just so that-
Yeah.
I mean, to see whether or not any of these proposed additions would be any more intrusive or, you know, whatever on the community down there than what's there now. I mean, I don't think there's much of a difference between having some sort of little coffee shop type situation or, as opposed to, you know, these service ones that we're adding and that was recommended, so. Okay, thank you.
And just, Mr. Zo, before you leave, but just for general knowledge, when you, planning controls that by, when the owner comes and asks for occupancy or asks for a permit to build up?
Yeah.
So you would control it?
But is there enough parking there for those uses that they want to put in?
And does the facility meet the requirements or whatever?
Correct. They have a lot of parking here, so they can accommodate a lot of different types of uses.
Thank you.
Other comments? A motion to both the public here?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Who made the motion?
Motion, Ms. Currie, second.
I second. It's easy to pick me up.
Now, do you mind finishing your-
You're done.
Thank you. Thanks for a few minutes to close down, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Audience comments? We are still following our COVID-19 protocol, so we have emailed comments to Mr. Graeme prior to the meeting. I believe we do have a emailed comment, Mr. Flower.
Yes, we have one comment from Barbara Sutter at 138 Sandpiper Lane. "I was appalled to see how much of the foliage along this section of the trail has been eliminated by the utility company. I understand that council approved this method rather than the usual pre-trimming that is done to protect the electric lines. I can't understand why council would approve this. Arrowhead Trail is Peters Township's best recreational facility. It serves all ages, all years round, for the least cost to the township. The foliage adds beauty and shade for all those who enjoy the trail. Unfortunately, the harm can't be reversed. I am so disappointed in council's decision." Daniel, any audience comments?
Okay, there's no unfinished business, so moving on.
But we did authorize that. I mean, that's the utility removing rush from their easement.
Yes, and the utility company has a right to maintain-
Which we have no control of, that's a federal-
They have a right to maintain their easement.
We don't, okay, we don't tell them what they can do.
And just to be clear, this, this wasn't the area that they sprayed, was this the area they sprayed the herbicide in that they came to us for?
Yes.
So this shouldn't be a, in theory, will not be a continuing problem now?
It did.
In theory.
It won't be a continuing problem, and the fact of the matter is it will green again. That's the nature.
Okay, new business, proclamation recognizing National Library Week.
So, April 4th through the 10th is National Library Week. The theme of National Library Week this year is Welcome to Your Library. Theme seems to be appropriate this year, given that the library is opening back up again for use inside the building, so the library board and the library staff has asked council to issue a proclamation recognizing Library Week.
Move we proclaim April 4th through 10th, 2021, as National Library Week.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is National Library Week. Congratulations to our library. I understand item B has been withdrawn.
Again? Yes, it's been withdrawn again.
Resolution of council authorizing the appropriate township official to apply for a grant to provide partial funding for the construction of the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center.
Okay.
Wait, excuse me, one second, Dave, sorry. This is like the third time they've-
Second time.
Second.
Yeah, we've issued one and-
Do they say why? They just-
I have no idea, I have no idea.
And they did this once before, and I'm assuming this will be for the second time.
Okay, seems like it was.
No, no, they had one in February, but then, this was on the agenda at the last meeting-
Last meeting, they withdrew it then.
On this meeting and they pulled it.
Okay, okay, so they had one before.
They had one in February.
I thought it was three times. Okay, thank you. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution of council authorizing Mr. Ball as chairman of council to make application for a grant to offset the cost of construction for the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. We have identified two opportunities for significant funding with regard to the aquatic center. This is a grant program that is administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community Conservation and Natural Resources, but it's actually federal funds through the, through the National Park Service, and we will be requesting a grant of $4 billion in funding. The thing about the way this grant is set up is that if this, if it is determined that this project is not eligible for the federal funding, they will revert and consider funding a much smaller grant out of state of Pennsylvania funds. But it's my recommendation that council authorize Mr. Ball as chairman of council to execute an application for a grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Could you please tell me, Mr. Law, is there a deadline for applying for this particular grant?
The deadline's in April. As a practical matter, Mrs. Harmel goes on vacation in the second week in April, so we're going to try to get it in before she goes on vacation.
The reason I'm asking is, obviously, we haven't voted to approve this particular amenity yet. If we would apply and be awarded the grant and for some reason decide not to proceed, what happens?
Well, I don't think you need to worry, because if we decide not to go ahead with the construction of the aquatic center, the consideration of this application will take much longer than that, and we can simply withdraw it at the point in time when council decides that they don't want to go ahead with the aquatic center. So there's no harm in applying.
What criteria would be the decision between the $4 million versus the other? Do you have any idea?
Well, the first hurdle is that, is that we're asking the Land and Water Conservation Fund to consider awarding this grant on a retroactive basis. We will, in fact, if we move ahead with the aquatic center, we will, in fact, have the aquatic center under contract while this grant still is being considered. So that is not a normal process for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, but it is a process they allow for. So the first hurdle is to get them to consider it on a, on a retroactive basis. The other thing, it's a competitive grant, so we're not alone in requesting funds. The good thing is, last year, the amount of funds that were allocated to the Land and Water Conservation Fund were increased dramatically, and the share coming to the state of Pennsylvania was increased dramatically. And in speaking with representatives from DCNR, they actually think if there ever was an opportunity to get a significant grant for, for something like the aquatic center, this would be the year to do it. So it's kind of a balancing act. Peters Township always is challenged with regard to acquiring grants, and that has to do a lot with the, the demographics of the community. It's, it's harder to get grants, given our demographics, so.
Does this require matching funds at all?
Well, it, it does, but, and I think where the limitation's going to be is, I don't think you're going to be able to get a grant more than $4 million, and so we all know that the aquatic center project is going to cost far more than that. So that's why, when I describe this here, this at best will be partial funding for the aquatic center.
But that grant can be retroactively applied, so in other words, if, if we've already built the aquatic center before we get this award, we can still essentially put the money back in our pocket then?
Yes, if, in fact, if, in fact, the National Park Service will allow us to do that. And again, they have a procedure to allow that to happen. I, you know, in fairness, I've got to tell you that the representative from DCNR has not seen that in Pennsylvania, but it occurs elsewhere. And so we're going to make that application to look for retroactive funding.
Well, you know, I, I personally always like us to try to apply for grants. Given the cost of the proposed aquatic center, getting a $4 million grant would obviously be a tremendous boost and a, a way to assuage some of the people who are concerned about the cost. I do think if we move ahead, and it goes under Mr. Ball's name, I think Mr. Ball's township email should be the one included in the body of the grant instead of a personal email. But that's my, yeah, my comment.
Oh, according to-
It says they, 122.
Okay. According to your fact sheet, it says that the township should have a determination as to whether a grant will be awarded by the fall. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yes, we believe that to be the case.
And is it, I know it's a matching grant, would it, so is it a 50% match, or is it, you know, a percentage of the overall project?
Well, what we're going, what we're going to apply for is, we're going to use the estimates that were given us by the, by the architect for the pool, which puts the, the cost of the project between 10.2 and, I think it's 11.3 or 11.4. So we're going to use those numbers, and so regardless of what the match requirement is, the amount that we're going to put in is, as shown is our share, is going to be greater than that.
So what happens if we approve not the, you know, Taj Mahal of aquatic centers, but a reduced-
Design.
Design, that still would be, you know, a substantial number? Would we have to then withdraw this grant and reapply using a different number or criteria?
No, I don't believe that to be the case.
Does this grant have a conservation easement or anything attached to it?
Yes, this, I have talked to council about this before. One of the things that's a requirement under the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and in fact, it's the principal purpose by which their interest in, in providing funds, is that it requires a, a easement in perpetuity that, that in fact, the land that was, that is under use will be used as a park. And that will extend outside of the area of the aquatic center. It won't be simply that, that area. It will be the parkland as a whole. And I think it's, quite frankly, as a practical matter, I don't, given what's occurring there, particularly if this aquatic center goes in there, I don't see that as an owner's requirement, because I don't see how you would ever reprogram that land for other use. It's sort of like Peterswood Park. I'm not sure how, I mean, you could do it, but I don't know how you would ever reprogram Peterswood Park for other use.
But it doesn't restrict what type of recreational use as you can make of the park, correct?
No.
And it would not restrict the potential maintenance voting or-
No.
And small administrative or rec center type thing?
Yes, that'd be correct. In fact, one of the specific questions is, the master plan has in it a large indoor tennis facility, and we specifically asked that question, given that it's an indoor nature and this is kind of, the intent of the thing is to provide outdoor recreational opportunities, would that be permitted? And the answer was yes.
Other questions?
Already had a motion.
All right, motion second.
Oh, did he? Oh, sorry. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. The ordinance amending Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, zoning designating personal services as a permitted use.
Now, since there was no real opposition from this panel during the hearing we had before, I'll move that we approve ordinance 865, amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, zoning designating personal services as a permitted use in the West Venetia Road Mixed Use Corridor Zoning District.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval for recording purposes of the Marnell subdivision is shown on drawings prepared by Harsman and C.E. Group, dated February 2, for Phil Marnell.
So this is a simple subdivision in which the owner of two adjacent lots wants to consolidate them into a single lot.
I'll move to approve the Marnell subdivision, as shown on drawing, as I argued, C.E. Group, dated February 2, 2021, for Phil Marnell.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointment of an alternate to the zoning hearing board.
I'll make a motion that we approve John W. Jones as an alternate to the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointment of a member of Peters Township Park and Recreation Board.
I'll move to appoint Katie Nease to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, change order number one to the contract with A. Liberoni for the construction of Rolling Hills Park Phase 1 project.
So on November 9, 2020, Peters Township Council awarded a contract to A. Liberoni for the construction of Phase 1 of the Rolling Hills Park project. As was the case with the Rolling Hills Drive project, it was thought necessary to solicit bids for this project prior to, prior to the final approval by the Washington County Conservation District of the erosion and sedimentation plans. That decision to, to award a contract prior to that approval had been discussed with council. The Washington County Conservation District issued the township an NPDS permit on January 27, 21. That permit required substantial changes to the proposed ENS controls. Mr. Zobitis has been working with Brian Smith of A. Liberoni to negotiate the terms of a change order. In part, based upon unit pricing, Liberoni utilized himself to calculate the original bid. As you can see in the proposed change orders, there are credits for, for quantities that were reduced and additional costs for quantities that were increased. The net result, however, is a change order increasing the contract by $69,732.13, which is 1% of the total contract.
I move that we approve the change order to Liberoni for $69,732.13, as required by the new requirements of the NPDES permit.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May I ask a question? What are we going to do with the slide that's occurred out in the front?
Fix it eventually.
That's not part of a solution?
It's not impacting anything right now, it's really, it's, it's outside the scope of either the transportation project or the park project, but Liberoni's on site, they agreed to go there and fix it. It was, if you can picture that stream being relocated back onto the site, it's really just a cut slope that lost its pace, of course, it was all the stream being there, so. We'll fix it, it will probably be the summer when it comes up.
There was always water that came down off of that side of the hill.
Yeah, there's, we had a few springs relocating.
A lot of people thought it was the pool that was leaking, which it may have been in part. Yeah, but, so you don't consider it to be an error or omission?
It's working, bro.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Law, is that the tractor we're looking to buy?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract to Fletcher's Outdoor Power Equipment for the purchase of a Ventrac 4500Z multi-use tractor under the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $31,783.94.
A second.
I think Frank wants two of them.
Wouldn't mind one for myself, yes.
If you come out, we'll let you drive.
All right.
I just want to point out that it's actually cheaper than what we budgeted for.
Yes.
So, yeah, people, people rushing us through.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed payroll and accounts payable bills. Accounts payable is about $618,000 this period. We bought some more rock soap, we have some miscellaneous equipment, and are paying freedom for the new parking rack automatic doors, which are very nice. There's a credit card statement for $15,000 and payroll about $292,000. I move to approve.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence, there is none. Anybody want to talk about any reports?
I have a question about engineering. I'm sorry, he left. Okay, that's all right, it's not necessarily Mark's decision, but he referred to the median between East McMurray Court and East McMurray Road, and that's a pretty broad area, and I know that in his report, it said that it was ceded.
Yes.
Are we going to do something else so that we can try to mitigate the need to mow and mow and mow and mow that, or what are we thinking?
Well, a couple of things. One, some of that property is going to be turned back to the adjacent property owners.
Okay.
That makes sense. But the decision was to leave it as a grassed area, because quite honestly, we think that's going to be the easiest way for us to maintain it. You know, the fact of the matter is, on the other side of the street, we're maintaining 90 acres of, of turf, and, and talking to Jay Meja, the, the person that handles that, he actually thinks that that's going to be the easiest way to maintain that. So for at least this initial year, that's what we're going to do.
Well, we usually contract out for those sort of things, so that's why I was wondering if we could plant something like Crown Vetch or something that's not going to require mowing.
Well, actually, in that particular area, because it's of its high visibility, the Public Works Department's preference is to actually mow that themselves, so that, in fact, it's maintained in a way that's, that's acceptable to our neighbors as well as the community.
Okay, we'll give it a go. I do have another question about police. There were several reports about the whole issue going on with identity theft and the different bank accounts being opened. And I do understand that Peters is partnering with other townships to find out more about that. Will we have a report coming forward about that at some point?
Yes, you will. I can tell you that the problem persists, and it's, it's not a local problem that the bank is having, it's a national problem, and it's not only being investigated here in our region, but it's also being investigated on a national basis by the FBI.
Is there anything that can be done, and if they've done this, and I haven't seen it on the TV channel, but to try to help people understand or find ways to kind of mitigate some of these issues, or help them understand what to do immediately if something, if something like that occurs? Like, are they putting it on the cable channel? Is it on the website?
You know what, I'll have to check, but I believe they have, but I don't know that for, for sure.
They may have it on their Facebook, and I don't do that.
There's some federal websites that, you know, do, I have some of the brochures and stuff in my office, I just can't remember which one they are, but, you know, we can put a link on there. I mean, they're pretty, they're not very long, but they're, they tell you exactly what to do and who to call and-
That would be good.
Yeah, send me that and we'll share.
Send me an email, you know, so I'll draw up my memory, but I keep that because you never know what's always going to- never know what someone's going to walk in and have their, you know, identity stolen and you need, I need to clean it up or try to find it out for them.
That's a good idea. And one last thing. Under the library report, they, they referenced how people, they opened up again, but I just wondered, is there a plan for when they will begin to allow people to use computers?
The middle of April.
Okay, so they're going to go ahead. Hopefully, that can happen on a timely manner. A lot of people really rely on that access. Thank you.
So any news?
I have a couple things. One of the things that's up on your, your space is a letter from Tim and Robin Taylor. It is also with reference to the clearing of the easements along Arrowhead Trail. They have asked for permission to go in and clear this area against the trail. I, I think this would be, quite frankly, would be a mistake. They may believe this to be their backyard, but this power pole here is 25 feet from their backyard, so it actually ends up up here somewhere. So what they would be doing is working on township property, and, you know, I don't think that's something that we want to encourage to occur. In the same thing here, if you look at this, this is actually 45 feet up this way. So.
Is there a house at the top of the hill or the bottom?
Their house at the top.
At the top.
This, the trails at the bottom.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I, I just don't think it's a good idea to have people working on our property. If, if, if people believe that there's, if council believes that there's something that needs to be done there, it's something we should be doing with our Public Works Department, not with a private contractor coming down the trail with their trucks. That doesn't make sense.
So they want to do more than just access their, their property?
Yes.
They want to clear ours?
Yes, and I think they also want to plant, and, and clearly, we can't allow planting because the whole reason why. And so I think one of the things, it's going to happen, and it's going to take a little time, you know? This will green back up again. It will not be kept as long because nothing along the trail is. And it's going to return to some kind of natural state of weeds and bushes and grum. So.
Is it possible, you know how we, they did that thing over on Grove? What's that little flower thing called?
Pollinator garden.
What's it called?
Pollinator garden.
I mean, would that be something we could put along the trail? I mean, I'm sure that stuff doesn't get very tall. Yeah, they, they actually, I've talked with Western Power, they are actually interested in doing it, and they're partnering with the Western Conserving Conservancy. Yeah, because I would think it would help erosion and all that. Plus, it would benefit the environment, you know?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The question I, comment I was going to make, and I like Mr. Curie's suggestion. The thing for me personally, you know, with that brush fire that occurred down in West Moreland, when we have a lot of debris that's laying in the woods, and where I live, there's woods behind and trees drop and they lay there, you know, it's a little concerning. I mean, we haven't, we don't know what the summer's going to be like, but if it's a dry summer, that's another concern I think that people have about the debris. So I think we need to watch it and make sure, and if it does not get cleaned up or it doesn't become a pollinator garden, maybe we should try to pull some of the stuff out of there.
Okay, well, let's, we will pursue the pollinator garden idea. Ryan will pursue the pollinator garden.
I assume the fire department's prepared to deal with the brush fire or something like that would occur.
Oh, yeah.
Not there, but like the general.
Yes, and they do, they deal with, deal with those way too often.
Anything else on miscellaneous?
Please. David?
Yep.
Courtesy of the notice and the observant reporter, I'd have to tell you that I just sort of fell off my chair relative to our good neighbors just up the street here, the school district, and the funding that are coming out of the COVID release. And the facts are, the City of Philadelphia School District is getting $565,000, almost half a billion dollars, or actually over that. Pittsburgh School, $50,000, or excuse me, $50 million. I've got my desk open, it's the wrong place.
I was going to say, it's more than that.
So $565 million to City of Philadelphia School Districts, $50 million to City of Pittsburgh. Peters getting $371,000. South Fayetteville, $280,000. Upper St. Clair, $272,000. I mean, what, I mean, if this is supposed to be a, an equitable distribution based on a COVID incurred expense per student, I mean, somebody'd have to probably torture me to ever get me to come to any sort of sense that would make that sense. And I, I mean, I think we as a community and the people that live in here need to go back to our legislature and say, this is absolute nonsense.
I, I do not understand the basis upon the formula for the school district. The basis of the formula for municipalities was in part based upon the same criteria that's used for community development block grant money. In the case of the township, it appears that the designated grant for the township is over $2 million that will be paid in, it looks like in, in over two years. The challenge is going to be, and the Treasury Department is supposed to come up with guidelines that they are going to announce in the first week in April, is that the uses of, that have been described for those funds are very limited. And so it, it's going to be interesting to see how that grant's going to be able to be used for the benefit of Peters Township, so.
There was $28 million allocated to Washington County, 2.3 to Peters. I'm guessing that the guidelines are going to be very similar to what we saw with the previous grant.
I can tell you, the difference is, the language in the act itself is so much narrower than the language previously. So it talks about, it allows us to make ourselves whole. So if we have a funding source where there's a decrease between 2020 revenues and 2019 revenues, we can plug that hole. But in our case, that's not going to be substantial. The other thing it allows you to do is to offer grants to businesses within town, and I'm sure we're really set up to be able to administer something like that and do it fairly. In terms of direct expenditures, it hasn't limited to water projects, sewer projects, we're not sure whether that's only sanitary sewers or whether that includes storm sewers, and broadband. And so unless someone in these regulations expands what that definition is, I think there are going to be a lot of municipalities who will be challenged, so.
But didn't it also say that it's shortfalls in funding for those areas?
Yes, but what you're going to find, that the shortfall in the case of Peters Township is well, well below $2 million.
Great. So what's going to happen is that we're going to take that money, we're going to spend a small piece of it and send it all back to the federal government?
I, I don't think that's Ryan or my plan to recommend that to council, so we're going to work on that.
I know, I'm just saying, if that's.
Oh, yeah, it allows you to transfer the money.
That's the federal government.
To the government, which I don't think we want to do either. We are going to attempt, along with North Strabane and Sartor's Township, to set up a, a meeting with our congressman to talk about this.
See if we can get that, and maybe we have some multi-municipality areas that we can look at to do that. Okay. Ron has.
Ron Books, 855 Bevout Road. In response to Mr. Lewis's inquiry, please understand that much of this has to do with the influence of a state senator from Philadelphia. His last name is Hughes, Vincent Hughes. He's the chairman of the Appropriations Committee. He controls purse strings. Believe me, Mr. Hughes is very influential. He's gained somewhere around between $12 and $14 million for his community since the beginning of this year. He is a very adept politician. I admire the guy for what he does for his town. So when you're dealing with Vincent Hughes, understand that most of this is going to be a political decision, and it will be based upon the kind of card game that Mr. Hughes plays. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I had suggested a possibility of a council workshop on March 29. It's become apparent to be that at least a few members of council cannot make that date, so I'm going to suggest that we reschedule that. The, there are three dates that are potential out there. Like Jeff says before, one of the things we wanted to talk about were the zoning regulations, McMurray Town Center, as well as the overlay districts, to review those with council and with the planning commission for the purposes of determining whether or not some types of changes are needed. The second thing we wanted to talk about was the architect selection for Fire Station Three. One of the things you have on your desk is a binder that has a, a copy of all the proposals that have been submitted, as well as some analysis and some insight as to the question about how did we get from 16 to five to, to two to one. So my intent is to put this on the agenda for action at the next council meeting rather than to wait for a workshop, because I think we need to move forward with this. And of course, the last thing we wanted to talk about was the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. So, you know, with that in mind, some dates that, you know, in terms of picking, well, council workshop might make sense. At the next meeting of council, one of the agenda items is going to be an authorization to go out to bid for the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center, and council could go on record as to whether we ought to be doing that. The other thing that I really, and we've talked about this two times already, and I really need to get a, a sense of how council chooses to approach this. You know, we told you that Liberoni's up there doing this earthwork. We have really good prices from him. Even if you were not to go ahead with the aquatic center, Mr. Zomitis and I would be recommending that we re-upgrade in that site so that we did not go back into the park at some future date and do massive earthwork. But I just want to make sure that I can tell the designer to remove the earthwork from the, from the bid documents and that we're going to consider that separately at our next meeting. And you want to do that for a couple reasons. One, he can't do the bid documents if he doesn't know whether the earthwork's in or out. The other thing is, if in fact we're moving ahead with this project, this schedule is going to be tight, and getting the earthwork underway as soon as possible while we're still out to bid for the remainder of the facility is going to be important in terms of being able to get it done on time. So I, you know, I guess one of my questions to council, without a number sitting in front of you, but as we have told you before, this change order could be half a million dollars. Can we move forward with an understanding that we're going to do this on a separate basis?
Are you planning to bid that change order? I mean, that's a lot of money.
Well, we have the unit prices within the contract, so what you're doing is issuing a change order to an existing contract for the same unit prices that you would have, that you would have, that you are paying for the initial job.
I don't have a problem with it. I thought that was, that was always my understanding, that's what we're going to do.
I thought you already decided.
Well, we haven't decided. I'm just, that was one of the things I wanted to talk about at the workshop, because I just want to get a consensus because it's coming to you at the next meeting, and I just want, need to be able to tell the designer how to do this.
Well, I'm for it.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm so much lower than everybody else.
Right. Well, and they're there right now. I mean, you're not going to get anybody else to do it for a lower price.
So am I hearing this from four people at least?
I'm not comfortable with it, but everybody else is. Can we do a, is, I don't know what everybody else is doing, the week of the 5th? I mean, we don't have to do a workshop on a Monday. Is there any day in the week of the 5th that we could meet?
That's up to you.
Prior to the 12th?
I can be there.
I'm one of the people that will be away, and I'll be away until the.
I could do April 19th or May 3rd.
The 11th, I guess.
But not in the week of the 5th of April, prior to the 12th?
No.
No.
I'm out till.
You don't have to say how long, just say no.
I think May 5th, I mean, April 5th.
So the 6th or the 7th would work for you?
I'm not back until the 10th.
Can we do anything before the council meeting? The day of the council meeting? That's too difficult for you, Mr. Lewis, isn't it?
Well, I just think that, given what Paul wants to do, I may take, you know, an hour talking about the zoning issue in itself.
Oh, I think the more we got involved in the zoning thing, I think you're, you're almost having to have a separate workshop on that. The more Ed and I and Seth worked on this, I, I think you've got to, you have enough, yeah, you've got enough for one night.
Well, and my concern is this, we were handed a summary of operating expenses, rolled up last week, last meeting, in a floor plan, a design plan. I, I have questions about that, and I don't necessarily want to be bidding on the aquatic center on the 12th if I don't have an opportunity to ask some questions and get a better understanding of what all those numbers mean. I mean, we're talking operating expenses for a very long time.
Well, and again, the, whatever makes sense for council, I'm going to work around. But the idea behind these dates are that they're all before the award of a bid. So if there were questions out there that you needed answered before you actually commit the township to build a facility, there would be the chance to answer those.
I think you go with the 19th.
The only part I was questioning, when you say authorized to bid, authorized change order, there is staff time involved in preparing things like that? Is that going to, is that?
The change order?
The authorization to bid, or are you just simply putting it on a page?
At this point, the authorization to bid is truly just a motion of council. The bid documents are in the process of, and the drawings are in the process of being finalized, so there will be a bid package, and the question is, can we send it out the door?
And there's a lot of times that we send packages out to bid, you know, without there being a formal action of this council. I certainly think, given the statute and the size of this, that this council's entitled to, to vote in this instance.
Yes, I think it's appropriate that particularly, we need to get this thing out of bid by that April 12th date. That's actually, I think that right now on the schedule, it's April 14, they intend to issue the bid documents. We, we need to hold to that schedule.
So one thing that would do would be to either verify or make null and void Kimmel Bograss's projection for cost?
Oh, what you're going to find out is, when those bids get opened on May 12th, you're going to know exactly what this project is going to cost.
Now, do you think we can do all those topics in one workshop?
Well, I think you just said you're taking the zoning out of it.
Well, I think what we're talking about is having a night to deal with. And I know there's already a concern about what's the operational cost and what's the method that we're going to do that, so I know that's something we're going to talk about. We're also going to talk about in detail what's in that plan and what are, what are being bid as altered, so the council's aware of what they can do to, to alter the bid once it comes in.
All right.
Well, I mean, it's obvious, I mean, we're going to have a pool night, that's for sure.
Yes.
And we're going to have a zoning night, for sure.
Yes.
So we're looking at two nights.
We should just book all those dates for you, is what.
Well, you should pick two of them.
Well, let's do the pool night on April 19th and then. Well, let's do the pool night on April 19th, and then we can do the zoning night on May 3rd.
When would the fire station be? Because I'm out of time on May 3rd.
I intend to put the fire station on the agenda, the design of the fire station on the next agenda. What that binder that's in front of you has all the information that we've worked on.
So here's where I am with this. All the previous significant projects we moved forward with, the park, we've had a comprehensive plan on it. The pool, we've done comprehensive planning on it. We're basically taking Mike McLaughlin's word that we're designing the correct facility. I, it boggles my mind that we're preparing to spend probably $3 million on something with no plan to move forward. To be honest with you, I think we need to reject the bids and start all over on it. I don't think, I don't feel comfortable with moving forward with that as is.
Well, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting if council feels that way, we can do that. I, Gary, I, this is an area where I'm going to probably disagree with you on, because I do think we know what needs to be done.
Why isn't it written in there? Why can you guys not generate a document that specifically lays out how operations are going to be conducted there? You guys have had a year and a half, you haven't done it.
But I, again, I'm going to disagree with you on that as well, because I think, I think we have discussed what that's, the functions inside that station.
You discuss it, you should approve it powerfully. I'm asking for a document that memorializes that plan, and it's, you guys just ignore me. So I'm not going to support it.
You know, I have to say, in respect to what Gary's saying, there are a few things in there that I do still have questions about. You know, you referred to putting in living space for ambulance responders. What does that mean? I'm not 100% sure what the usage is and why we would be including that when we're in fact funding them already. So I'm trying to understand the detail. I would like a little bit more clarification of what that means.
In that binder, there's more detail.
For me?
In that binder, there's information with more detail.
Just a follow-up on what Gary said. I mean, what information do we have that's concrete? Or at least something that, you know, you can hang your hat on, that will actually demonstrate that not only what that building should have, but what it's going to need over the next 20 or 30 years as that part of the township gets developed? I mean, is any of that addressed in any kind of studies?
Again, we addressed this with council in the budget workshop. What you're looking at there is what is going to be in that station, not only once the station is built, but down the road.
Paul, it's easy to say what's going to be in that station. My question is, so how does mutual aid work going forward? Are we still going to be dispatching North Sturbein for all fire-related calls? If that's the case, then a ladder truck should be down there. Not a ladder truck on McMurray Road, but North Sturbein's right down the road. Is that considered? No, I didn't see it.
Well, it is because the design of the building is intended to handle multiple pieces of apparatus, including a piece of apparatus as large as the aerial truck. So it has that capability. With regard to the ambulance service, I think the fact of the matter is that at some point in the future, and I don't know, and I think it may well be the distant future, it would not surprise me that the township is in the business of the ambulance service. I just think that when you're, when you're building that building down there, you want to recognize that potential and a lot of space for it. And having talked to Mr. McMurray, he's not sure that they wouldn't want to do that sooner than later, in which case, it's bunking a couple of their people, as well as the fire people.
Well, see, and that whole comment right there requires a whole nother conversation. The strategic plan would have to be, what does that look like if it becomes a fire and ambulance response group? That's a whole different animal.
But you're nowhere near that, and I don't know how you would, how you would begin to do that in terms of...
I'm just saying, personally, I want this fire station built. The response times in that part of the township are twice what they are from the other side. So I want the station built, but I want it built in a manner that's going to be efficient, economical for the people, give them what they need, and not overbuild it. But if there is a future need, then I want to understand exactly where we're going with this.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because one of the, oh, go ahead, Bob.
Well, I don't know, I'm kind of disappointed, but I've sat here when we've had the discussion relative to hiring a consultant to tell us about the coverage of the fire department. We've talked in terms of how that has evolved into the need to see this developed. And Gary, what I'm hearing from you is you want someone to help compose a program for the fire department. And I'm not so sure that you're going to be satisfied to see that done in-house. And I just think we need to see a movement forward with this plan to construct a firehouse, and...
I just don't want to see a fire station built, and the duty crew that's supposed to be there ends up in station one all day, there's no coverage. That's one concern's going to happen, that if operations aren't planned out properly, the whole purpose of that station being built is going to be to, at that point.
And I don't necessarily have as much concern about that, but I do have some questions that aren't answered, and I'll read my binder and find out the answers.
And if you do not want to put this on the next agenda, that's okay. We can incorporate it into one of the workshops and have...
Well, I certainly do think that we need to move forward. And the answers and the evolution of the design will be something that we can comment on as it comes about.
Well, what do we typically do, though? If we're building a rec center, or we're building a pool, what do we do? We can, you know, we take bids from architects, and then whoever gets the contract designs the building, right?
Well, but what Gary's saying, and I understand, you have to come up with the program. There has to be thought given to what it is you want to build. The architect can't do that for you. We, in fact, I think have captured what needs to be done. And again, when you get a chance, you can read what's in the, in that document there. But if you want to make it part of a workshop, so that we can have more of a discussion, and if there's things that we're not giving you, that you need to make that decision, we can get that together.
Have we decided when we're going to do a workshop?
Not yet.
That was our first thing of this. Was anyone in a problem with April 19th?
No.
No. Okay, so April 19th's pool night, now Gary's not here on May 3rd, so...
April 19th's what?
April 19th's going to be pool night.
The workshop for the pool.
Pool night.
Oh.
So we would do the 17th, then?
We'd do the zoning on the 17th.
I mean, I agree with Gary in that, you know, if we're going to spend all this money on a fire station, we need to make sure that we know exactly what needs to be there, and how it's going to be staffed and whatnot. I mean, I've always operated from the standpoint that this is going to be, you know, like a, not a substation, but, you know, obviously not as large and not as involved as the station, the main station on East McMurray Road.
It is in fact going to be a substation.
And, you know, if that's the case, then it shouldn't be that difficult, like Gary said, to say, okay, we're going to have these many, you know, we're going to have two guys here, two full-time guys here each day, and volunteers will be here in sessions. Because I completely agree with Gary, I mean, just from the basic, you know, camaraderie of firefighters, I probably don't want to be the one person who's stuck at the substation all day long. I'm probably going to want to go back to the main station myself. That's just human nature, but we have to make sure that there's some plan that specifically says how that's going to be staffed.
Again, when you get a chance, take a look at the binder, and if we need to do this in a workshop, maybe we can do it on either the 19th or the 17th. There's not a, you know, the only, the only reason why this is on the agenda right now is that if in fact we're moving ahead with the pool, and if in fact we've got to go out and borrow funds to be able to do that, we need to make sure that we borrow sufficient funds to do the fire station as well, and that's why we're trying to get an architect under contract. Okay, so we have a 19th of April, and the 17th of May.
All right. Anything else?
Paul, I sent you an email about people that live in the Camelot Land, approaching me about the sign that was taken down when the Waters Group went in, and...
Yeah, we actually researched that. That sign was always on private property. That property, of course, was sold when the Waters Group went in. There was no commitment from the Waters Group to be able to maintain that sign. The one thing that they did, well, when they went to take that sign down, was to try to save the lettering that was kind of unique. But it had aged so badly that that wasn't possible. Ed and I talked about this, I think the only possibility for a sign, and I don't, we'd have to get permission, would be on the other side of the street to find out whether or not there would be a willingness to allow a Camelot plant sign.
Well, see, I'm the one that brought that up, and I recall them committing to replacing that sign as well as trees along there, and I, there's new trees there or not, but...
I don't know if they committed to replacing, and I think they said they were going to look into whether or not they could accommodate it after they put their building in. Which, if, you know, if they wanted to be good neighbors, they could, because there's certainly plenty of room there. But remember, Paul, that same Camelot sign was on the other side when they put that townhouse development in back in the 90s, and they ripped it down. So there's no reason to believe that they will let you put one up now either.
Yeah, I know they apparently gave permission.
Yeah, they were matching signs on both sides, yeah.
Yeah, there were two signs.
And I remember, there was a lot of grief when that one got taken down, but it, you know, it subsided because there was still the one on the other side, which of course now is gone, so...
But unlike the signs of the interest in most plans, those signs have always sat on somebody else's property without an agreement.
Anything else?
Do you have an executive session?
Sure.
All right.